Calling to order the Monday, October 18th, 2021, regular meeting of the 38th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Here.
Mayor Protem Dean?
Here.
Councilmember Gavin?
Here.
Councilmember Henin?
Here.
Councilmember Price?
Here.
Mayor Turbrack?
Here.
Our first order of business this evening is the approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Gavin with support from Councilmember Blanchard, even though I know there was a few people, I apologize. Are there any changes to our agenda this evening? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. At this time, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge. With us this evening is Pastor Josh Ray.
Good evening, everyone. Please bow your heads and pray with me. Dear Father, we lift up the City of Berkeley. We lift up the decision-makers in this room. We ask that you guide our conversation and that through this conversation, the betterment of our city takes place. God, we ask for understanding of each other, for listening. We ask that if we have disagreements, that we can figure them out peacefully and move forward in our conversation. God, we ask that we have a sense of welfare and that we understand the needs of our community. God, we ask for justice and for rightness. God, we ask for confidence in what we are talking about this evening. We ask again for the ability to work together and for harmony. And finally, we pray for peace in the lives of each person in this room and each person in our community at large.
Please turn to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We will now move to public comments. Per our normal rules and procedures, these are public comments for items that are not included on tonight's agenda. You will have the opportunity to speak on a specific agenda item while it is being considered. Remember, councilmembers will not engage you in discussion, but if your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or Department of the City, please make sure you sign in at the clerk's table. For those of you that are attending the meeting in person, you may simply step up to the podium, state your name and city of residence prior to making any comments. For those of you that are attending with us virtually today, you can utilize the raise hand function by selecting Manage Participants on the bottom of your dashboard, selecting More in the bottom right-hand corner. Our moderator will call your name aloud and unmute you so that you can speak when it is your turn. For those that have called in, you can be placed in queue for public comment by selecting star nine. The moderator will announce the last four digits of your phone number for recognition and unmute you so that you can speak. Please remember, you'll have three minutes to speak. Once your three minutes are up, you will be muted by our moderators. Additionally, the clerk will read comments that were mailed to either us or to her at clerk@berkleymich.net, those that came in prior to 5:00 PM today. Again, we're going to go in order like we've done the last few times. We're going to start with people here, then I'm going to go to the clerk for anybody that's sending comments, and finally, we will go to the hybrid for public comments. Thank you for waiting patiently. I apologize that you guys came up before I was through my spiel. Feel free.
Good evening, councilpersons, Mayor Turbrack, sorry about the pronunciation, and Berkeley residents. My name is Dale Carlson, and I come before you tonight as the Secretary of the Berkeley Historical Committee to publicly announce the 30th anniversary of the Berkeley Historical Museum, founded in 1991, and to inform you and the citizens of Berkeley of a special celebratory opening of our museum on the evening of Wednesday, October 27th, from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. In celebrating our museum's 30 years of service to the community, we present to you this gift, a restored and inscribed historical image of the Berkeley Village Hall and Fire Police Station as it appeared in 1953. We also extend to the citizens of Berkeley and to the general public a cordial invitation to obtain their own complimentary print of this image that will be gifted to the first 150 attendees at our 30th anniversary party that will be held again at the Berkeley Historical Museum at 3338 Coolidge Highway on the evening of October 27th from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. Complimentary cookies will also be served, and on the recommendation of councilperson Baker, possibly cake. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We look forward to that. Sue, anything? I didn't know if you wanted to add anything. Okay.
Charles Terrill of Berkeley, I'd like to ask you to move item number three from the consent agenda to the regular agenda. I know that I have written in about that. Several others have said that they have written in as well, and I think it deserves the discussion that it would get as a regular agenda item.
Thank you, Chuck. Seeing nobody else in person, Ms. Mitchell, we'll go over to you for any correspondence that you received to be read during public comments.
Okay. One, Wendy and Dave Zabramsky, Berkeley, would like the approval of 0921 removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda. They ask to state they feel some committees are selective about who is chosen. Two, David Hunter, Berkeley, would like the approval of 0921 removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda. He urges council to vote no on 0921. He feels this ordinance was drafted to benefit one person and proposes residential exemption should be made on a case-by-case basis instead of revising an ordinance. Three, Kathleen Kleckner, Berkeley, would like the approval of 0921 removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda. She is opposed to allowing citizens who reside outside of the city to become members. Four, Chuck Terrill, Berkeley, would like the approval of 0921 removed from consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda. He states approval of 0921 would be bad policy and set a terrible precedent. Five, Mr. Terrill again from Berkeley, wants council to vote against a tax abatement proposal for the developer of the Berkeley La Sallete School Project, R 3221. He voiced that when the developer speaks of the challenges of rehabilitating the building and the cost involved, along with meeting lending thresholds, these are considerations that should have been thought of before starting the project. Six, Michelle McFarland, Berkeley resident and business owner, asks council to deny the tax abatement requested by the La Sallete property developers. She states our community is entitled to the rightful taxes for developments by businesses that will profit from them. And that is all.
Thank you. Ms. Mathis, for our residents that are with us virtually today?
Looking at now, friendly reminder for everyone tuning in, you can raise your hand using the raise hand function, or if you show me your, if you take your video off, I can raise your hand, I can call on you that way. I'm seeing none at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Give everyone one more second, just in case they're trying to turn off their, or turn on their video so you can see their hand up.
Seeing none at this time, sir.
All right, thank you. We will close public comments, and we will move into our order of business this evening. First up is our consent agenda. Our agenda has been approved. We will discuss items on the consent agenda. Right now, Ms. Mitchell, would you please read those?
One, approval of the minutes, matter of approving the minutes of the 38th regular city council meeting on Monday, October 4th, 2021. Two, warrant, matter of approving warrant number 1367. Three, ordinance number 0921, matter of considering the second reading and adoption of an ordinance of the city council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, to amend section 2-227 of Division III Historical Committee of Article 5 of Chapter 2 Administration, to delete the requirement that historical committee members be registered voters. Four, motion number M 6221, matter of casting Berkeley's official vote for the election of the Board of Directors for the MML Liability and Property Pool, directing the city clerk to send in the marked ballot.
Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion approved by Councilmember Blanchard with support from Mayor Protem Dean. Discussion on the items on tonight's consent agenda. Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. With all the discussion and all the emails I've gotten, I think I'd like to make sure that the residents all understand that the Historical Committee does not spend city tax money. They only spend basically money that they earn. So whoever is on that committee has no authority over any of our tax money. The reason that we intended to do this is because there are a number of historians in the area that don't live in Berkeley but have connections to Berkeley. They have lived in Berkeley in the past. They want to contribute to the city. Some of them have documents they want to bring to the committee. So we considered doing this so that we could allow those individuals to participate and help us improve our museum and improve the history that we have documented of the City of Berkeley. So that's why I am supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments from councilmembers? Councilmember Henin?
Yeah, I'll add on to that. The Historical Committee is an advisory board. They cannot execute a policy without our approval, without city council's approval. And all of us, by charter, have to be residents of the city. On top of that, non-residents serving on boards is nothing new. The DDA, the Downtown Development Authority, has existed for 28 years and has no membership requirements. They have significant spending powers and yet, and can make some policy decisions without our approval. And there hasn't been, you know, discussion about that. So there's, and the final thing, the Historical Committee has unlimited membership. Putting someone, a non-resident, on the committee does not displace a Berkeley resident. So, you know, I'm not really a huge fan of this law, but I don't see harm that it would cause, and I'm not opposed to it either, and will be voting yes.
Thank you. I would also like to clarify something, because I've received some emails from residents asking why we were removing a residency requirement for folks to be on the Berkeley City Council. I want to make that abundantly clear. That is not at all the case. It certainly is not. I don't know how that conversation even came up. We are specifically speaking about the Historical Advisory Committee today, as my colleagues have already mentioned. So I just want to make sure that that is clear, because I did receive some emails asking why that was the case, and it is not the case. Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll just add to the comments already offered by my colleagues, the notion of checks and balances. So if there was any concern over just somebody from Des Moines joining the committee with no connection to Berkeley, that will not happen. The appointments would, the resumes and applications would first go through the committee, where they would vote on passing that forth to council, similar to how many of the other committees work. And then council, of course, has the ability to approve or deny an application. So there are several layers of checks and balances to ensure, as my colleague mentioned, those with, those historians and those who have deep connections to the community can continue to serve in a formal capacity in an advisory role. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Additional comments from council? Seeing none. Any other comments from anybody that is here with us? I meant in person, not alive, sorry. That sounded strange. I meant with, yeah, go ahead, go ahead. You're good.
Charles Terrill from Berkeley. The idea that outside historians or other people with things to contribute to the museum not being allowed to, they've always been allowed to as volunteers. We've had several people over the years who have worked with the committee and for the committee and for the museum who were not registered voters of Berkeley. They did not get a formal seat on the committee itself. And I question the idea that the committee gets to review applications to decide who they want to be on the committee before it goes to council. That is a step that does not need to be there. The committee, as far as I know, the last I knew, is still lacking bylaws. How can they, even if you say it's okay, and they can go through and decide who they want on their committee? How can they do that with no written guidelines, no written bylaws as to who they're going to accept? There are no bylaws pertaining to how that money that they earn is to be spent. Who gets approval? How much? How does that, how does that approval process happen when they do want to spend money? There are some things lacking in the committee itself, and I think that taking the idea of the committee being registered voters of the city away is wrong. It's a bad policy. It's a bad precedent. If you do it in one committee, can we do it in other committees as well? What if we have somebody who's a big-time environmental activist and knows a whole lot about the environment? Maybe a naturalist or whatever their background may be, do we then let them on things like the Environmental Committee? We need to keep, we need to keep the reins of the committee itself with the people of the city. DDA is different because it's the business owners. We allow the business owners, who may or may not live in the city, who have a business interest in the DDA area, to be on the DDA. So that is quite a bit different. They do have an interest. They do have things at stake to serve on the DDA board itself. So that is apples and oranges compared to this. I beg you, I ask you to reconsider this. It is, it is wrong-headed and needs, needs to be left as it is, that to be on the committee, you need to be a registered voter of the city.
Okay, thank you, Chuck. Anybody else in person with us today that would like to comment? Ms. Mathis? Anybody with us virtually that would like to comment on the consent agenda? Maybe somebody has some strong feelings on who we're going to choose for the MML liability
I'm seeing no hands raised at this time, sir.
Just another second. Anybody, any further on council? No hands raised?
No, sir.
All right, with that then, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on tonight's consent agenda?
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Consent agenda has been approved. We now move on to tonight's regular agenda. Would you please read item number one, Ms. Mitchell?
Recognitions, presentations, matter of any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
Seeing no recognitions or presentations, we'll move on to item number two, please.
Motion number M 6321, matter of considering the appointment of Michael McGinnis as Executive Director of the Downtown Development Authority.
Is there a motion to approve M 6321?
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Baker with support from Mayor Protem Dean. Mr. Baumgart?
I think, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mike McGinnis has been working as our interim executive director for a couple of months now in support of the DDA's Board of Trustees. I, sitting on that board, as well as my fellow Board of Trustees members, have had the opportunity to observe him in person at events in the capacity that he has worked so far, not only in support of the board, but in support of the district and the community as a whole. He has been impressive, and the DDA board has taken up the matter of dropping the interim from the title under the state law that requires approval from both the DDA Board of Trustees as well as the city council. So they recommend to you that you consider following their lead and likewise making him our next permanent executive director of the DDA Board of Trustees. You're joined this evening by members of the DDA, as well as Mr. McGinnis himself.
Well, does anybody want to speak first? I'll certainly let council have some thoughts, and I will allow Mr. McGinnis to enter his plea after this.
Good evening, councilmembers, mayor. I am proud to be able to say that we, after a very long journey, have found the correct candidate for the position. And I would be remiss in saying that I didn't get, several emails over the last couple of days from board members who wanted to be here at, in person in this meeting, but could not, and wanted to make sure that I impressed upon everybody that this was a unanimous decision, that there was no dissension, that Mr. McGinnis earned his spot here. He's done a fantastic job, and as a matter of fact, today I was doing some Facebook gliding through, and there were citizens, I can only imagine, that were just promoting his, his good work as well. So I hope you guys will see it the same way we do. Thanks.
Thank you, Andy. Anybody else from the DDA wants to make some comments first? Okay, councilmembers, I'll allow, Councilmember Baker, did you have your hand up there?
Sure. Mostly, I just wanted to give Mr. Gilbert the formal opportunity to introduce himself and his role, but he, he is the chair of the DDA board, and so his, his recommendation comes, comes with, as mentioned, the full support of the board. I'd simply just like to add that in the time that Mr. McGinnis has been here in the community, just in my day-to-day travels up and down Coolidge and across Eleven Mile and talking with the business owners about all sorts of things, nothing but positive comments, accolades, and tremendous respect for the immediate explosion of creativity, energy, and more than that, the connections that are being made. Mr. McGinnis has an encyclopedic memory and is able to make these spontaneous connections if, based on the topic that comes up. You could be talking with business owner A and mention to them in the course of the conversation that business owner L is working on a similar type of initiative, and perhaps they could coordinate and, and exchange ideas. And I think that, that mastery of, of activity, especially given his brief time here thus far, only bodes well for his continued contributions in support of our business owners. So I will be very happy to support this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Blanchard?
Just a quick one, Your Honor. I also like to tell you that the pumpkin farmers greatly support Mr. McGinnis. All his efforts here, so.
Councilmember Price?
Yes, like some of the others have said, just seeing the vibrancy that's been coming to our downtown due to Mr. McGinnis's creativity, passion, it's really impressive. I had, had the fun opportunity of participating in Ladies Night Out last week, got to chance to talk with a number of Berkeley business owners, thanking them for all they were doing to engage our city at night and participating in Buckley, and they all turned it back to that new DDA director. And I got permission from one of them, Susan from Vetrine, to quote her this evening. She told me, "Our DDA directors have always provided a face for Berkeley, and now that face has a smile." And I felt like that summed up Mike McGinnis, and I'm excited to support this position for him tonight. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Dean?
Thank you, Your Honor. As a downtown business owner, I fully support Mr. McGinnis's appointment as director, but I have to say that the day he walked into my shop, he made it a point to visit and meet all the business owners, and the day he walked into my shop, he just, he brings an energy with him wherever he goes. And I can see that, I can feel it. He's begun ideal labs, which are, take place at the various downtown businesses, and we just bounce ideas, talk about different things, and to your point about the business owner A and L, and could you collaborate on this? He's making things happen in a way that didn't happen before. Not that nothing happened, I'm not saying that, but it's, he's bringing businesses together in a different way, and we're all benefiting, right? And it's the collaborative efforts and the, and the collaborations between businesses, that's what brings us all up. And as recently as the night market, I, I am not open late. My store is not a late-night destination, right? But Mr. McGinnis said, "Hey, you know, we're doing this." And he so gently talked me into it, and I am not, I am not an easy mark for that. And I was like, "Okay, we'll, we'll try it." I am so glad I did it. I had, I got new customers, I met new people, we turned it into an event in-store. So he sparked yet my creativity, which I know he's doing with all the businesses. So yes, yes, 100% yes. And thank you, DDA, for your diligence and seriousness with which you searched and found your next director. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honors. I'm sure Mr. McGinnis would like to keep this going. I will echo some of my colleagues and agreeing with them, that Mike brings an incredible energy and a passion to this role, and I'm just very excited to see where he continues to take it along with the DDA Board of Trustees. So thank you very much.
Councilmember Henin?
Well, I don't want to be left out. I, I have seen the energy and the excitement and just the great things in the DDA, and really looking forward to what the future brings.
Mr. McGinnis, would you like the opportunity to address the court?
Good evening. This is surreal. So for those here with us this evening and, and those at home, it's not too often that you are put through this gauntlet. This is a first for me, but I'm grateful for the Board of Directors of our Downtown Development Authority, who approached me with this sort of outside-the-box idea. It's not something I had necessarily known was even an opportunity, but I'm thrilled that it is. And it's been an extremely rewarding and, and stimulating opportunity these last few months to serve as the interim director, and I'm really excited and determined about what we can do collaboratively as a community, because the downtown is, is not an island, it's not unto itself. It will thrive the most when it is fully and collaboratively at its fullest potential, as is the entire Berkeley community. So I'm really grateful for not only the DDA for this opportunity, but also the entire Berkeley community for welcoming, welcoming me so warmly. This will get the most impact when we have all of our stakeholders, all of our institutions really collaborating, experimenting. And over the years, which I hope it will be years, over the years to come, there will be experiments that aren't as successful or don't land with a perfect Olympic Berkeley panache. But it's important that we keep innovating and we keep coming up with new ideas, evolving what are our traditions and, and allowing them to continue with us into the generations to come. I foresee great things, and that's not about me. I foresee great things for this downtown because there's so much potential, so much opportunity, because there's so much quality and high caliber businesses, restaurants, community members that are already fully engaged. So it's about just taking that to the next level. So thank you for this opportunity. Thank you for the very kind words. Again, surreal to be there in person, to hear them, but I'm available for any questions if you need them in terms of my experience, my, my background, but it's really about the work that we'll put in together and how we can creatively meet the challenges and opportunities that we go forward with.
Well, Mr. McGinnis, based on what we've heard today from councilmembers and from the business owners, and not even business owners, just residents who have heard you at various events, speaking so enthusiastically and supportive of our community, I will tell you that expectations have certainly elevated since your interim role. And I don't mean that as, as a joke or a slight. I mean, there are very, very high expectations, and I am very confident that you will not only continue to meet those expectations in the future, but surpass them with the ideas and the energy and the creativity that you bring. So I certainly echo the thoughts of my colleagues and the community at, at large with the positive feedback, and I don't want to get ahead of myself. feedback, and I don't want to get ahead of myself, but I do think I can welcome you here as the official Executive Director, at least based on what they've said, unless people change their votes, which does happen. And we're very excited to continue working with you, Mr. McGinnis, so thank you for being with us today.
Thank you.
Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on M-6321?
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Congratulations and thank you, Mike. We now move on to item number three, please, Ms. Mitchell.
Motion number M-6421, motion to approve the appointments to various boards and commissions.
Is there a motion to approve M-6421? So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Gavin, with support from Councilmember Baker. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thanks, Mayor. We've got a slate of volunteers for you this evening for the Downtown Development Authority Board of Trustees, the Environmental Advisory Committee, as well as our Technology Advisory Committee. First up, for the DDA Board, you have three candidates that have gone through a recommendation process from that Board. The trustees recommend Jennifer, Jenna, or Hans, Ms. Erin Brick, both for a Coolidge appointment for a term ending in July 1st, 2025, and Mr. Tim Barnes as the 12-Mile Area Appointee for a term also expiring July 1st of 2025. Next up, for your Environmental Advisory Committee, we've got Ms. Trish Losi, and as a reappointment for a partial term, oh no, sorry, this would be her first one, she's been on the tree, longtime volunteer on the Tree Board, so the name should be familiar, for an appointment to a partial term ending 1st of July in 2023. And also Noel Rendelman as an appointment to a partial term expiring 1st of July in 2022. Third volunteer board, it would be the Advisory Committee, or Technology Advisory Committee, Mr. Ian Miller and Mr. Thomas Prescott, both for a partial term ending 1st of July in 2022. So all wonderful volunteers. I know council has the opportunity to review their application materials, even if they're not included in this packet, but we would recommend the appointment of each.
Any discussion on council for our volunteers who are graciously volunteering more of their time to our community? Any of the volunteers that are here or virtually with us, if you would like to say anything? You don't have to. I promise, Jen, you don't have to. Okay.
Hi there. I'm Jennifer Hans, and I'm the owner of Pinstspiration Berkeley at 2733 Coolidge. I grew up here in Berkeley, and walking back and forth from Berkeley High School to get Jets Pizza as a high schooler, it was always one of those little, "Man, it would be so fun to own a little shop along Coolidge." And so it's a, it's a great opportunity now to be able to have a shop like Pinstspiration right, right in that, right in that same zone, right? Right where I was having those thoughts. So while my kids are not yet high schoolers, it's nice to know that we will be a part of the community for a long time to come, and I look forward to serving with the DDA Board and bringing my own style and energy and creative spirit to the DDA. So thank you.
Thank you, Jenna. Appreciate it. Ms. Mathis, are there?
Nothing.
I know, I just want to make sure if we have anybody that's waiting to speak on the hybrid?
Sure, I am not seeing any hands raised at this time, but if we want to give them comeback, maybe somebody will have their hand raised.
Certainly.
I just wanted to introduce myself, I'm Timothy Barnes, I'm on the list for the DDA Board, over on 12-Mile where the Dalhousel used to be, and I look forward to being able to help the community, 12-Mile area and all the DDA, the Downtown District area as well as Berkeley, improve across the board. I also would like to take this opportunity, I didn't get a chance a moment ago, I wasn't paying attention, to express my support for your choice, because he is, he is most definitely, brings a high energy, which is repeating what many people have said, but I thought it was worth one more shot, and I look forward to working with him as well. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you so much. Ms. Mathis?
No comments, sir.
All right. Comments from council members?
Just a brief moment, just wanted to acknowledge to Mr. Barnes and his time here tonight. I believe he may have neglected to mention the name of his business. He gave us good coordinates as to where it was by using a familiar anchor, but he is the owner of Gatekeepers, a fine establishment, and encourage you to go check it out. Thank you.
You made the effort to show up, we can at least give you a plug for the reason. Thank you, thank you for that. We certainly appreciate that. All right, seeing no additional comments, or either virtual or in-person, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on M-6421?
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Thank you to Jenna, Erin, Tim, Tricia, Noel, Ian, and Thomas for volunteering your time in towns with our community. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number four?
Resolution number R-3321, a resolution of the Council of the City of Berkeley authorizing participation in the 2020 FEMA Assistance to Firefighters Grant.
Is there a motion to approve R-3321?
Motion to support.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Blanchard with support from Councilmember Price, even though Councilmember Blanchard wanted to have both of those things. Not do them both. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thanks, Mayor. This is the first of three related items on the agenda this evening. This is one that we're very excited to bring to you. This comes to you through the hard work of our Public Safety Department, as well as their partners over in the Beverly Hills, the Village of Beverly Hills Public Safety Department as well. They and a couple of other local departments all got together recognizing a need for new lifesaving equipment and our self-contained breathing apparatus. So they jointly submitted a grant to FEMA, that grant was successful this year. I know we talked about this a little bit during the budget process, at that point it was just hopeful, but today we're able to make it a reality. Beverly Hills has already put forth the paperwork to work through this grant as the lead, and so now it falls to the partnering communities to also acknowledge that they do intend to follow through. You see in your resolution itself, as well as the packet, you'll see the amount of money that this is going to yield, so this is going to be absolutely vital to our operation, and it's going to be almost, I think probably about 90% funded through this grant. So it's a fantastic success story and a credit to all those involved. Lieutenant Corey Miller is with you this evening to represent the Public Safety Department for all of your difficult technical needs.
Tyler Miller, why don't you come on up? Thank you for being with us this evening. Before we turn it over to Councilmember Blanchard to ask you some questions, anything else you would like to add?
No, this has been several years in the making. We've applied each year collaboratively with our mutual aid partnership. Last year we got close, we didn't get turned down, they just ran out of money. This year, the big push was for the self-contained breathing apparatus, which when we do a regional grant puts us higher on the needs list than putting in for an individual department, so.
We appreciate your perseverance and diligence to get us to where we are today in working with our neighboring communities.
Disclaimer, I absolutely did nothing except give them some statistics. Lieutenant Ginther from Beverly Hills really did the lion's share of the work drafting the grant document.
We'll have to teach you how to not do that. Don't have to necessarily say that, but questions from, I know we have some, a couple items that are going to revolve around this, but any questions for Lieutenant Miller? Councilmember Blanchard, you gotta give something.
I'll give some comments, but I think the whole project is excellent. So the people, the public knows these self-contained breathing apparatus tanks expire after 15 years and have to be replaced. Normally, we would replace the tank with a new tank and keep the operational part of it, the breathing part, but in including technology of this stuff, they don't make those tanks anymore, they make a different tank with a whole different set of electronics. And in case anybody's wondering, the current tanks that we have have 190 days left before they expire, because we've got a spreadsheet that keeps everything down to the day of when they go out of service. So it's time to do it now. We knew it would be a lot of money, and we lucked out through the hard work of Rob Ginther and our people here to get this done. Excellent job by everybody.
Excellent. Thank you. Other questions or comments for Lieutenant Miller? Because Mr. Ginther is not here with us? Okay. All right. Any comments from anybody that is with us in person? Ms. Mathis, you know, I'm coming to you next, just in case anybody has their hand raised.
I see that Chief is on. Chief, are you wanting to say anything?
Oh, that's a mistake.
Yeah, I apologize for not being there in person, I'm fighting off a man cold, which is really serious. But I was going to take credit for everything, but since Corey's already kind of spilled the beans, then I just want to say Corey is being a little bit humble, there was quite a bit of work he did also, but it's a great team effort, and we're really looking forward to purchasing, well, hopefully purchasing this equipment and really upgrading the safety of both our personnel and the citizens.
Thank you, Chief. You should have taken the credit, because Corey certainly tried not to, but the reality is Lieutenant Miller, sorry, Corey, as Chief said, you did have a significant role in this, and I do know that, so I appreciate how humble you were, but it's not easy, especially when you're dealing with grants in multiple communities, regardless of how much Rob helped out, you're certainly involved, so thank you. Any additional questions or comments on this resolution? Okay. Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on R-3321?
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Now let's move to item number five, please.
Motion number M-6521, matter of approving the purchase of replacement self-contained breathing apparatus, SCBA, and associated equipment at a total cost of $62,710.99 for the Department of Public Safety. The SCBA equipment will be purchased by the Village of Beverly Hills from Apollo Fire Equipment Company, Fire Apparatus Repair, Inc., 12584, Lakeshore Drive, Romeo, Michigan, 48065. The sole source vendor for the MSA SCBA equipment from the SCBA Equipment Account 101-310-984-001.
Is there a motion to approve M-6521?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion approved by Councilmember Blanchard with support from Councilmember Baker. Mr. Baumgarten? Anything else?
Thanks, Mayor. Just some of the totals, how we got to that $62,000 number is outlined in your packet here, in total, that is a savings to the city of about $142,336.17. That's all the grant-funded portion. The city's match on that is about $17,604. And there are some non-grant-funded items that come along with that purchase at about $45,000 or so. That is how we get to the $62,000 number, but keep in mind that that is utilizing $142,000 worth of grant funds, so it is a real success story.
Any additional questions? Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you again for bringing this suite of items here before us tonight, because they are quite sweet. Yeah, you know, so curious about training and timing, is this something that's, you can just go get off the shelf, or is this a custom unit, and then thoughts about training and ensuring that our folks know how to use the equipment properly?
So we're currently in the MSA pack, so there's not a huge training curve. Probably a couple hours of training will suffice to get them in service, it'll be relatively quick, because we're already with that current vendor, that current platform.
Nice.
Couple minor changes, but other than that, a quick implementation.
Excellent. So yeah, as mentioned, it's a replacement upgrade kind of thing, so it's not brand-new to the team. Just wasn't sure if there are any idiosyncrasies or curiosities.
No, there's some, because this is a grant-funded venture, we were able to get a nicer set, if you will, so with some additional features. One of the additional features is each individual air pack will contain a thermal imaging camera, which is unique. We have one that we carry with our hands right now, this one will be built-in, will be hands-free, so the additional see-through the smoke, see-through the bad environment option that we would have right at our fingertips. We only have five thermal imaging cameras now, so if you went to grab one, one's not there, this would be in everybody's cachet immediately.
Fantastic. What's the maintenance schedule for these kinds of things? Are they annual?
So there's a biannual test, and then there's an annual maintenance schedule, similar to what we've already been doing through Apollo Fire, where we purchased our last air packs.
Excellent. Well, thank you. I hope that that's the only time the equipment is being used.
I hope so, yes.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Additional questions or comments? Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. Corey, would you cover a little bit about the other benefits? One is with the longer time, because of the bigger tanks, and some of the other things. We've still got a pass system on this also?
Yes, correct. So the tanks are larger in size visually, but they do hold a larger capacity, they're a higher-pressure system. The bottles we have now are a 3,000 PSI system, which gives us about a 30-minute breathe time, which if you're working is probably about a 15- to 20-minute breathe time. These will be a 45-minute bottle, which will extend us up to 30 minutes of work time, roughly, again, in that crucial time of just getting in there and fighting fire, then have to leave to change your bottle, so that will help. We're continuing with the same brand as all our mutual aid partnerships, so there's interoperability. If there was a need to switch out bottles or change bottles, we have the ability to work with our equipment, and there's some special features that in a dangerous situation, we could adapt our pack to their air pack if they ran out of air type thing. So that's why when we tested as a group, as a consortium, we went with this model.
Excellent. Thank you. I appreciate the insight there, Corey. Any other questions? All right, seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on M-6521?
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number six?
Motion number M-6621, matter of approving the purchase of an MSA-compatible Cascade System to refill SCBA bottles to be installed on Squad 4 for the Department of Public Safety from 5 Alarm, 350 Austin Circle, Delafield, Wisconsin, 53018-2171. The sole source vendor for MSA-compatible Cascade equipment for a total cost not to exceed $26,699 from the SCBA Equipment Account 101-310-984-001.
Is there a motion to approve M-6621?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion approved by Councilmember Blanchard with support from Mayor Protem Dean. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thanks, Mayor. We did not know if we would get this grant as we initially put together the budget, and so we allocated $200,000 for SCBA equipment and upgrades. As you see, we were successful, and so this does free up some additional resources for us to expand the system that we're purchasing these bottles for. So the recommendation from our Public Safety Department was to also incorporate the ability to fill these bottles from the vehicle onsite during a scene. So we broke this item out specifically in order to be as transparent as possible. This is an item that would not be covered under grant-funded funding, but does allow us to, would allow us some additional capacity, and is only brought forth before you this evening because of the dollars that were freed up by securing the grant. So this is, again, related to the grant, but is not grant-funded.
Lieutenant Miller, anything you want to add on this item?
So the Cascade System, if you're not familiar with it, it doesn't have an air compressor to fill bottles, there are stored air bottles that would be stored on the truck. Currently, if I back up, in 2007, when we got the original grant for our SCBA, we also got an air compressor system to fill bottles, and that was housed in Berkeley. With preparations for replacing the ladder truck and renovations, we moved that down to Oak Park. It was purchased as a group, much like these air packs are at this time. That system still works. Unfortunately, when you run out of air bottles on the scene, you have to transport them somewhere to fill them. This gives us the opportunity to fill bottles on the fire scene and then keep those bottles back in service. The other thing is when you fill bottles from a system like that in Oak Park, the air goes in compressed, so it heats up, and as it cools, we lose the air pressure. So 500 PSI on an air bottle could be 50 to 60 breaths of air. It's very important to a firefighter. So often when we're doing our daily truck checks or our weekly truck checks, we find air bottles that have come down below the full mark, and we have to take them down there. This would help the efficiency, where we could just top off the large bottles on the truck and have that stored air ready to go.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Any questions for Lieutenant Miller? Obviously, this is incredibly important, equipment that we are dealing with, lifesaving equipment. Again, as the manager mentioned, we're able to do this because of the grant that was able to defray some of the costs on the other side. Now, we can continue to improve our capabilities to not only save lives, but keep our public safety workers safe for as long as possible, and give them the tools that they need to continue to serve our community at the highest level, which they currently do. Ms. Mathis, I did hear, one second, Councilmember Blanchard. I did hear somebody, just in case there is somebody that wants to comment virtually.
Yes, sir. I think that may have been just a slip.
Okay.
Because I'm not seeing anyone at this time.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Just another quick comment, Your Honor. This, in the past, if we had a major fire, we ended up throwing bottles in the back of a pickup truck, running them back either here or at Oak Park to get them filled. That takes a firefighter off the scene, limits the amount of time we can spend in the building, so this will improve that greatly. So, it's, the amount of money we're spending on this because of the grant, it's a great addition to our system.
Excellent, thank you. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on M 6621?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number seven?
Resolution number R 3421, matter of designating Saturday, December 4, 2021, for the annual holiday parade and tree lighting ceremony in Berkeley. The approval is conditional upon the submission of required items and documents prior to event dates.
Is there a motion to approve R 3421?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Gavin, with support from Councilmember Baker. Mr. Baumgarten?
Ladies Mayor, you have the application in front of you here. The resolution outlines the dates and times and the wonderful events that will be happening this year. The application has been reviewed by each of our departments and signed off, and comes with a recommendation from all of the appropriate departments for you this evening.
I believe we have some representatives here from the event.
Good evening. Hi.
Hello.
Cindy Kuhn, Chairman of the Holiday Parade Committee. And first, I would like to say thank you to our DPW, our public safety, all of our city workers that made it happen last year. Mayor, you and I talked about it. We didn't want it to go by, okay? And for that, it's just huge. Thank you. At this point, we are back here with happy times that we're gonna do a parade. We would like to invite this council to do like we have always done, and that would be to show up on Saturday, December 4, at 5:30. Actually, you gotta be there a little bit earlier, to walk in the parade, ride in a carriage, and participate in our holiday parade. And...
A tree lighting.
And the tree lighting. Come down to City Hall, where we have the annual tree lighting ceremony. And the guy in the big red suit will be here.
Excellent.
And we are gonna make it work. And I would also like to ask permission. It went over so huge last year, the drive-by Santa, that we have been asked many times if we could do that again this year. COVID is still here. We have, from last year, I received several phone calls, several messages from parents with children with special needs that have never, ever been able to come to the parade. They've never been able to come to the tree lighting. Autistic children that can't participate. I have elderly people who are homebound that were ecstatic that Santa came by their house. We have a lot of immunocompromised people that are homebound. There was talk of a compromise to maybe do it, and really, with COVID still around, people still fearful of leaving their home, I'm asking if our, with the help of our city staff and our DPW and our public safety, that we can, and our volunteers, which we have, we need more, but we would love to have more, absolutely. But we would like to see that continue again this year. And so, any questions?
I don't have any questions personally, but I would like to echo what you said, Cindy, with the drive-by last year. And, look, that was at a very tough time. Couldn't do the parades. We couldn't have any of the events we wanted to have in 2020. We haven't been able to have all of the events we want to have in 2021. But that was certainly a day that brought a lot of holiday spirit and happiness to our community.
Yes.
That being said, we know it is an undertaking to get that in place, and being able to do that and the parade is something that we think is doable. And I think that is...
I do want to add...
Oh, go ahead.
I do want to add that we are tacking on a couple of hours so that Santa doesn't have to do 90.
Right. Santa was motoring. He was motoring a little bit.
And I don't want anybody to worry about Santa, because...
We've got it covered.
Santa will be, Santa will be good.
Santa's...
Will be ready. So, just to continue, it was so well-received, and so many people obviously have such fond memories of the parade. We wanted to be able to do that again. So, we are going to, as a city, and I've spoken with the various departments many times, to make sure that it is possible. And it is, it is possible. And there may be a little bit of Christmas miracle in there, but I do believe that we are going to have a tremendous event, and December 4 is going to be an incredible night in the community. And after, after we have that celebration, we'll probably learn some things from how we set things up this year. And I know Santa has certainly been texting me a little bit lately to figure out, how long do you need me? And we'll get that squared away. We'll make sure that that works. And, you know, if we need to reevaluate some things after, make some tweaks, we can certainly do that. But I know there has been a lot of, a lot of talk and a lot of consternation on the social media, which, you know, my personal feelings aside, I did receive some emails as well. The holidays are an incredibly special time for everybody, incredibly special time in Berkeley. Knowing what we did last year and how well that went off, and being able to do that with the addition of the parade and the tree lighting, I would certainly ask that anybody that attends the tree lighting, especially because we're gonna have a lot of people potentially in a little closer area, yes, we are outside, respectfully ask that everybody wear a mask there, and we will see how Santa is feeling, whether we're gonna be able to sit on his lap. Maybe it's kinda yelling at him from afar, but we do want to take every precaution, because no, as Cindy mentioned, COVID is not gone. And we think that we can safely have these events, still bring the holiday joy and the spirit to all of our residents, but we all need to be as safe as possible as well. The good news is, the kids are very used to wearing masks in school every day. They have zero problems with that. I have not heard anything from the superintendent or the school board, any issues that they have had. I can tell you that my kids just wake up and put it on. I mean, they get out of the car, and they just don't think about it. So, I don't think it will be an issue, especially knowing that if we do, there's a guy in the big red suit that we can get a couple, maybe get some words with, so.
Absolutely.
I'm very excited to do the Santa, have Santa come through our community on our city streets, have our parade, and have our incredible tree lighting ceremony to really keep everybody going in that holiday spirit.
And our awesome DDA Director, who is, we're gonna make it happen that day. It's gonna be a full day.
Welcome to the team, Mike. To the team.
By the way, I wanted to stand up. I love him.
Well, I appreciate that. Denise, anything else you would like to add as far as the tree lighting?
I just wanna, you know, say that we want to make the tree lighting the safest event we can. I would also reiterate what you said, ask everybody to wear masks so that we can have as normal an event as we can post-COVID, and we need to have everybody safe so that we can give Santa the key to the city.
And we don't want anybody to get sick in December either, so we all need to make sure we're doing our parts to be as safe as possible at this event. Anything else? Thank you both so much for your time today. Any other comments? Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you both, and to everyone involved. I know this is quite a labor of love, and the tremendous work, both coordinating the parade, the volunteers, the tree lighting, the apple, the hot cider, everything like that, all the donuts, mm.
We're still gonna do that.
Excellent. We'll find a way to do it safe. I think that'll be great. Is there anything that we need to adjust or amend to this in order to ensure that both events happen? This seems to speak to the parade itself, and is it, is it just known that the Santa Cruz could also be included in there, or do we need to make a friendly amendment? I just want to make sure that we cover all the bases to codify the fact that we support both events.
No, the basis is covered. The application that you come before you is largely centered around the closure of 12 Mile, as well as Coolidge. The Santa Claus being more of a rolling event does not require the same oversight, so it's a known item to us.
Excellent. And is there an assumption as to what day the Santa Cruz would be? Is it the same day, or do we think the same day?
Everything's gonna be on the same day.
Cool. Cool. Like you said, it'll be a fun, a fun-filled day.
Wind into a parade.
Yeah. Excellent. Well, thank you again.
Mayor Protam?
Thank you. You mentioned needing more volunteers. If someone wants to volunteer, how, who do they contact? How do they make that known?
If you, we have a Facebook page. It is the Berkeley Holiday Parade.
Okay.
Okay, I think that's it. I'm terrible, I'm terrible at that. And if, if not, they can contact Cindy Kuhn.
At the lunch cafe?
At the lunch cafe, if you want, or you can private message me on Facebook.
Or email.
Or email.
BerkeleyJuniors@yahoo.com, and I'll send the message to the parade.
Yep, thank you. Perfect.
Options. Excellent.
Great.
Fantastic.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, as you know, we're pretty good at the plan.
I still have mine.
Well, this is gonna be a new one, 'cause it changed the date.
It's the new one.
What's in here is the cover so far. The rest of us have been worked on. What I would like is any detail from particularly the juniors about how you're gonna handle the crowd around the gazebo and what you're gonna do. Are they gonna sit on Santa's lap? All that stuff, I want, need to get that in here with some detail. So, if you could give me some information, I would appreciate it, so we make sure that we're doing everything right, and I'll get this updated and get it out to you in a few days.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Jack.
Thank you.
We might possibly also be utilizing out in Coolidge right there and have it, because the street will be blocked off, just to spread people out.
We need to know the timelines on all that stuff, so we can get it in, make sure it's in the TCO also. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no additional questions or comments, anybody else here like to comment, please? Go ahead.
Carrie Passanen, just a resident Harvard a long time, but also a mom. And I have a high schooler, and I have an elementary. And my concern, actually, first off, I'm so excited, because not only are we gonna get a parade, but we're gonna get a drive-by. And I am even more excited, because it's nice to hear that we still have awareness that COVID is here. I mean, we're all sitting here in masks. I understand we're indoors, but COVID is still here. Our kids are not living a normal life right now. But with the parade, I was wondering, I had some other ideas. Mr. Blanchard, I appreciate your commentary and concern with regards to the logistics, and I furthermore appreciate you acknowledging all the conversation that's going out in social media with regards to the importance behind them both, because it actually, both events really did tap nicely with everybody. It was inclusive to everyone and everyone within the community. My parents, who are 70 years old, were thrilled that they couldn't come out, because it's too cold for them, that they had Santa driving down the corner of Beverly and Henley. And then there was me, who was at the parade, but then we also got to see the drive-by as well, and the little Santa tracker that was done and everything like that. It was cool. Super cool, actually. So, like I said, I'm really happy to see that. However, my concern is the 12:4 being designated as like the whole day. And actually, it's a couple concerns. The parade, I was wondering, well, in the essence of time, you said that we could actually revisit some of the details and like the logistics that you were talking about, as far as keeping people safe around the gazebo. A real quick proposal or something that I wanted to ask the city is, would it be possible to change the location as to where the parade travels? Can we travel from 12 Mile to Catalpa, 12 Mile and Coolidge, to Catalpa, and then go into the Anderson and the Community Center, and then maybe have a tree lighting ceremony and pictures with Santa at the ice rink? I don't mean to be a smart aleck by any means, but you know what I mean when I say the ice rink. There's lots of space, it's vacant, we can accommodate the social distancing, as well as even having masks as well. Gazebo is so tight under normal conditions. Last year, we didn't have any parade, and it's just, this is two months away, and it's, it would be nice if, since we have that much open space available, to utilize it rather than squeeze everybody, and actually probably keep a lot of people out of the situation, because they're just not comfortable going to that small of a space. The other thing that I wanted to bring up as a possibility and pose as a question to the city is, the drive-by Santa was so cool, but it was like most taken and really nice to see at nighttime. Like, you mentioned bringing up adding a couple more hours. We have to get the kids, I mean, I've got a scout, I've got a stealer, I've got a high school player, and there's band as well. You have to get the kids, there's not enough time in the day in order to have the kids travel from the drive-by over to where they have to line up for the parade, and it's just, I don't know how we're going to squeeze all of that in, let alone what it's gonna do on Santa. Just as a resident, I personally would like to enjoy both the drive-by and the parade. It's hard enough just to have the parade and enjoy it, when I just have to get two different kids to a stealer or to a this, or to a scout address, wherever they're supposed to meet, the meeting place is, to line up for the parade. Would it be possible to make them two separate dates? I know someone had asked if these are on the same day. I mean, obviously, I'm not the only one with the concern that it's kind of a lot for a day. On the 18th, possibly, like 12:4, first Saturday of the month, always is the parade. But on the 18th, can we have the drive-by closer to Christmas and have that be another event? I don't know.
Well, Carrie, I appreciate your comments, and as I mentioned, this year, we're gonna see how it goes and potentially make changes. I think the biggest potential complication is making sure that Santa can visit us twice in that month with all of his other commitments, preparing for the holidays coming up. But from a logistical, logistical planning perspective, we may be able to have those conversations for the future.
Exactly. That's what I was saying. In the essence of time. Sorry, I was all over the place, Mr. Mayor.
No, you're right. No, those are good. Those are good points, and they're...
Not used to doing this kind of thing. I'm just a layman.
We've thought about it as well, and again, we're gonna...
Just as long as we're gonna have the opportunity to come and have those kind of conversations.
Of course.
It sounds like we don't have all of the details ironed out yet anyway, so...
Again, with COVID, things tend to...
Oh, I know. Homecoming happened in a week and a half, right? Understood. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We have kind of worked through a lot of this. The drive-by will finish at 4 o'clock.
Right. It'll be done before, so there'll be time.
Right. Finish at 4 o'clock, which gives us an hour and a half.
Yeah.
I will say, doing it on another day, there's logistics. We're volunteers.
Yeah.
It's Christmas time. It's, that's all. I mean, we're open to
I understand. I know. I'm with you, Cindy. I have heard
I'm looking for volunteers.
The one thing, one thing that I have heard, some folks who were on the tail end of the Santa drive-by last year, when it was all lit up and everything, that was pretty cool and some of the people during the day. But look, again, Santa's a very busy guy in December. We're lucky that we're getting some time with him here this year. And as we mentioned, if we need to make some tweaks in the future, we will certainly be able to do that. Ms. Mathis, is there anybody with us virtually that would like to comment?
I am not seeing any hands raised at this time, sir.
All right. Well, with that being the case, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on R. 3421?
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Hunnen?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Trubrick?
Yes. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number eight?
Resolution number R. 3221, matter of considering a resolution to approve the commercial rehabilitation exemption certificate in accordance with PA 210 of 2005 as amended to include parcels number 25-18-431-030, 25-18-431-031, and 25-18-431-032 for the purpose of redevelopment of the La Salle and development of new buildings for multifamily housing.
Is there a motion to approve R. 3221?
So moved. Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Price with support from Mayor Protem Dean. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you know, this is a carryover item that was postponed at our previous meeting. In the time between the two meetings, Community Development Director Schluto was able to gather questions answered during the meeting as well as reach out to individual council members to gather any further questions. She was able to get all those to the developer. They included in your memo is their response to those questions as asked. Also included, part of the request was to actually view the financials, given the developers' reasoning being financial hardship. Our finance director was able to review those materials. He did not keep them. He returned them after, but he was able to summarize his findings in a memo that's included in your packet as well. And the last new item from your previous packet was various resolutions on the different ways that council could move with this item. It includes one for full approval, one for full denial, and then various assemblies of different approvals that could happen across the three different parcels that would be included in the application here. The rest of the materials are the same from the previous meeting. And Director Schluto is here with you in person this evening. Unfortunately, our finance director was not able to be here, but I believe we also have the applicants joining us via the wonders of technology this evening as well.
Ms. Schluto, anything you would like to add before we begin our discussion?
No, I just want to say thank you to everyone for taking the time to speak with me over the last couple of weeks to make sure we got all of your questions answered and could get those to the developer and hopefully they've answered your questions. But I'm really here just to field any other questions or concerns that you may have. City Manager Baumgartner, Baumgarten, sorry, summarized everything very well as well as the four resolutions that we have prepared for you in your packet this evening.
All right, council. We had a relatively thorough and detailed conversation a couple of weeks ago. There were a number of at least outstanding questions that prevented us from moving forward with a vote. We have received the information that was outlined by the city manager. And I guess we will begin with lingering questions. Anything else before the applicant addresses us? Councilmember Price?
I think I just wanted to start by expressing appreciation for Director Pollak for reviewing and summarizing the financial pro forma from the developers, certainly not in his job description. And I was really grateful he was willing to perform that service for us. And thank you very much to Director Schluto and your staff for submitting the questions to the developer, for following up with them, for following up with me multiple times throughout the last few weeks to make sure that all my questions were answered. I really appreciate your proactive approach to this process.
Additional comments, questions, or who wants to dip their toe in the water and get off the fence on one of these decisions? No? Okay. Not seeing a lot of action up here. Councilmember Baker?
Sure. Well, I'll start again by echoing the gratitude both to Mr. Pollak and to Ms. Schluto for your time and attention. The opportunity to connect was a little bit more tough logistically than I would have liked, but it was all on me. So I want to thank you for your patience and ability to speak with me. I was pretty clear, so maybe I'll put like my sock in there, but not yet my foot or a toe.
Got to start somewhere.
Yeah, you know, so last time I expressed continued support for the brownfield abatement, which has to deal with the asbestos remover in the school itself. That makes sense to me. That came before this body back in November and we, you know, we signaled that that would be something that we were interested in based on that district. I have had a great opportunity to review this material and speak about it, and I still struggle with the need for an abatement on a parking lot. My thinking is that, you know, they knew that it was a parking lot when they began the project and they worked their numbers and perhaps in a way that they may have wanted to work their numbers a different way if they had a chance to do it over again in terms of what assumptions would be made in terms of abatements and things like that. So I remain in support of doing what needs to happen to preserve the architecture and structure of the school building with appropriate abatements so that they can tackle that additional work and make it safe for residents for decades to come. And I remain unconvinced of the need for the second and third parcel to receive a similar treatment.
I think that was a full foot.
Did I?
I think you just went ahead and went for it. So I appreciate that. Councilmember Hunnen? Get on a roll.
Yeah. And first I just want to express my appreciation to the development team and getting our answers to the questions in such a timely manner. And they really were a great help. The new information got me closer to a yes, but I'm still a no on any abatement, including the school. My belief is if we say no, we're still going to get apartments in the school. We're still going to get apartments in the back lot. They just won't be as fancy. And if they aren't as fancy, I think they'll be more affordable. And to me, the city getting more apartments that are, I'm not going to say they are affordable, but are more affordable, you know, I see that as a double win. And that's why I will be voting no on any tax abatements for this property.
Okay. Thank you. Perhaps the developer or representatives, in case there's any additional context outside of what we've already discussed and the information that was given to us before council continues their discussion?
Hi, Jessica DeBoe, PM Environmental. We're located at 4080 West 11 Mile in Berkeley. We've worked with the development team on preparation of the various materials that have been submitted in relation to the application for the commercial rehabilitation certificate as well as the previous brownfield plan and the district that was put in place on all three parcels for the commercial rehabilitation district. I'd just like to echo the summary regarding the memorandum provided by the finance director, which supports many of the pieces of information also provided in our memorandum following that October 4th council meeting. And through the attorney, as it was stated, we provided financial information for the project, including a detailed pro forma. And this pro forma was in the same format that was previously reviewed and required by the Michigan Economic Development Corporation as part of their consideration of the project. And at that time, also contemplated the anticipation of a tax abatement for the project as well. And in following the review, they did determine that there was a financial need for the project overall with that a tax abatement included in the materials they reviewed. And this is the same conclusion that the finance director came to for the entirety of the project. And I'll quote a piece out of that memo just for anyone that might be listening that may not have been able to have the opportunity to review everything. But essentially, I quote, "When reviewing the economic feasibility of the entire project, granting the PA 210 abatement is an extremely important factor in the overall viability of this development. It also appears that a large portion of the savings generated by the brownfield and the 210 abatement will be invested in the development itself and not simply taken as future profits by the developer. I think it's just important to ensure that everyone realizes these tax payment programs exist, to really help municipalities enable the tools to foster economic development and generate tax revenue for the long term for years to come. Both historically and prior to the developer acquisition of this property, the taxable value was zero, as well as the taxes, of course. So the taxable value today is a little under a million and it's a direct result of the developer acquisition. And that results in around $55,000 in taxes on an annual basis. Those taxes will continue to be collected throughout the length of the abatement. We also estimate, following completion of the project as it's designed, the taxable value will increase to 3.6 million, resulting in additional taxes of 65,000 for land, school, personal property taxes, all that would be collected immediately, following or generated immediately following completion of a project. And that's on top of the existing 55,000 that's collected annually. And then following the abatement, we're estimating approximately $170,000 in additional new taxes generated based on the project as it's designed today. And again, this is in addition to the existing 55,000 that will continue to be collected throughout the length of the abatement. We really appreciate your time and everybody taking, you know, the time to really think through this and provide your questions. We're thankful for being able to provide those answers to you and have the opportunity to have the finances reviewed. Just, you know, want to reiterate that this abatement isn't adding necessarily to profits, but making the project as its entirety possible as it is designed today and really helping to secure that long-term economic development and tax revenue for the city. So I'll hand it over to Tom here, who's with the development team, for anything he may want to add.
Thanks, Jessica. This is Tom Herbst. I'm the CFO for the developer. I'll reiterate what Jessica said. I appreciate Mr. Pollak being able to review the pro forma for us. We're glad that he had a chance to look at that and we agree with his conclusions as it's been what we've been saying for the past year, that this abatement on top of the brownfield reimbursement are necessary for this project to go forward. They were always contemplated as part of the solution to make this project work on this troubled site. This is not something we stumbled across at the end because of some error or technical issue. This was always needed to make this project go forward in the manner in which the city desired, which was saving the character of the school building. And so I just wanted to make that clear. I know maybe there's some confusion that we have multiple parcels, multiple phases. We keep referring to something as a parking lot. As we talked about last month, one of the main reasons we have separate parcels was a effort to get the school building demolition and remediation started quickly so that we could get through the approval processes through the city more quickly and not have to wait for the back building. But it is all one project. And I did speak to our attorney this morning. And if that is causing any concern for anybody or any confusion that we have separate parcels, we are willing to combine them back into one parcel after we get through all of this abatement administrative paperwork. We are willing to do that in the future if that's causing concerns that somehow this will be separated into two separate projects. We are happy to combine it into one parcel if that's causing anybody concern. Because again, there's a lot of talk last time about parking lots and why they need abatements. And again, just to be clear, this abatement has nothing to do with the $55,000 you are currently collecting in property taxes every year. The abatement only is applied to current value increased by the development that goes forward. So the 55,000 you collect right now, you will continue to collect regardless of how many of these parcels you accept the certification for. That does not change. This does not cost the city one single dollar to approve this. Again, the abatement is only applied on the new value created on top of those parcels, nothing that exists today. And I would take it even a step further if the concern is to maximize the amount of property taxes collected by the city. Actually rejecting this will end up costing the city more money. As the memo mentioned in its conclusion by the finance director, as we stated last time, if these abatements are not approved, we will not be able to get financing for this project, which is not our decision. That is the decision of the lenders that we work with. And we will have to go back to the drawing board and come up with some new type of use for this project. I can't speculate on what that might be. It'll be a matter of what is financially feasible and economically able to be financed by our lenders, but most likely that it will be involved in reducing the scope of the project, i.e. the overall dollars spent. Right now, this is a $15 million project, which results in the abatements that produce the expected property taxes that Jessica mentioned earlier. If we have to go in and build some type of smaller project here, that will result in smaller assessments in the future, which will result in fewer tax dollars for the city. And so while you might get a few more dollars in years five and six and seven, over the lifetime of this project, in years 10, in years 20, in years 30, by having a smaller project there, you will ultimately have cost the city tax revenue if you reject these abatements. So again, we just wanted to clarify that this is one project. They are all, the abatement as well as the revenue from that back parcel is necessary to support the renovated school building. And if that is still the desire of the city to have that project go forward in that capacity, then all of these, all three of these abatements need to be approved in conjunction with each other. Thank you.
Okay. Folks that are with us, does anybody here like to comment on this item?
Joshua Hunter, resident in Berkeley. Mr. Mayor, I just want to make sure it's clear that, you know, the property isn't being abandoned. And I read the letter that they sent to council dated October 11th. And through the letter, the school isn't even being demolished. There's, it may not, the exterior may be different or they may use different materials, but they'll continue to pay taxes and they'll have to maintain the building regardless with or without the abatement, whatever they decide to do in the future. So we're talking about the project they proposed and something smaller in scale. So it was mentioned that the taxes will continue with the abatement, but that'll also be the case without the abatement. And if you read the, if you read the letter in the financial hardship section, I'd just like to read a paragraph where they mention what would happen if the abatement doesn't pass. It says, "If the abatement is rejected on all three parcels, the project as currently designed will almost certainly not move forward as planned. The developer would have to reconsider all options for financial feasibility, included but not limited to reducing the scope of renovation of the former school building. This could translate to changes in materials, reduction in interior finish levels, elimination of amenities, et cetera. This type of shift in design and amenities would reduce the overall cost of the building, would also reduce the rental rates the developer could attract, shifting away from the young professional demographic and targeting a different segment of the rental market." Now, I don't know what, that's kind of, that sounds like a threat to me. And I don't know what they're talking about regarding a different demographic. I mean, that just, to me, it sounds like they're trying to stir up some fear, xenophobic or racial fear of lower-income people coming here. I reject that. I know council rejects that. I know the city rejects that. So I, and it goes on to say that we have to look at all potential uses for the school building as well, including some that would potentially not retain as much of the architecture and historic character as the current design. You know, I think, I think most residents would like to see the school preserved in some way and it's going to be, whether it's just the bones of the building. It doesn't, I didn't read in the letter that it's going to be demolished, but I don't think they ever expected the taxpayers to support this either through an abatement or otherwise. That was, I don't recall any resident saying this should be taxpayer-supported in some way. And they go on to say that the abatements do not cost the city anything, as all taxes currently assessed will continue to be paid. But I mean, that's ridiculous. All property owners pay the, you know, same rate under the law. You know, what's before you is a specific exemption. You know, it's literally called an exemption certificate. And a 78-unit apartment complex will of course be a greater burden on city services and infrastructure over the years. And you're being asked to gamble 10 years from now that what they'll provide in the next few years will have a higher value in the future. It's, I mean, I think we need to have fiscal restraint here and, you know, reject any threats like this that it may not be, may not look a certain way. So I'd ask Mayor that council rejects this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Anybody else here before I turn it over to Ms. Mathis for folks that are visiting with us virtually? Anybody else here before I turn it over to Ms. Mathis for folks that are visiting with us virtually? Ms. Mathis, would anybody like to comment?
Yes, we do have one hand raised. Joel, would you like to unmute yourself? You're welcome to speak. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Hopefully you can hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Great. I'm really struggling with the cost-benefit analysis because I don't see it in the packet. And one of the things I noticed was that the finance director said it was the same information that was submitted to the MEDC or Development Council. So that would be the fifty-four units with a parking lot, I assume. I can see the benefit of that. I can't see the benefit of abating the additional twenty-four units because it seems like, based on my numbers, because I don't have any other numbers, that you're abating about as much as you'll gain in ten years. I could be wrong, but again, there's no cost-benefit analysis provided. Thank you.
Thank you. I am not seeing any other hands raised at this time.
Okay. Well, we've heard from some residents, we've heard from the developer, we've heard from a few council members. Mr. Baumgarten, if you want to just quickly run through what our options are because we have four different resolutions in our packet here so that everybody's aware of what's going on, and then council can make a decision.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. So your choose-your-own-adventure for today is, first is a full approval, which would be an approval of all three of the parcels indicated in the application materials. Your second option would be, just vanished for no good reason. Your second option today is, of course, a full denial, which would be to approve none of the items as listed here. The first of the partial options that you have would be just to approve the item that is the school building, which is the partial ending in zero-three-two. And then your last option would be the approval of the forwardmost portion, zero-three-two, as well as the middle portion, which is partial ending in zero-three-one. After that, it would be all three. So those are the options that council has before you. There is a resolution for each included in your packet, as we've been saying throughout. The reasoning just needs to be made as clear as possible because there, no matter what council does here this evening, it is the local government that reports the findings and the actions taken back to the state. And so we would be the ones to carry that message forward to the treasurer's office.
Okay. So thank you. Again, we have four options ahead of us today. Full approval, full denial, and two partial approvals. One just involving the school building parcel and then the other involving an additional parcel as well. Everybody clear on what we are going to be deciding on?
Yes.
I mean, I assume we are, but it's more so just for everybody else who hasn't seen all four of these things. Okay. So with that in mind.
I'm confused. Can I ask a question?
You can.
According to the developer, I understood it as though...
Well, please come to the microphone again and do the whole thing, just state your name, city residents again.
Carrie Passman, twenty-two eighty-three Harvard.
Thank you.
I'm confused. And the gentleman back there also took it as a threat. I'm seeing it as a different threat, but didn't the developer say that he wanted all three of them to be put as one parcel?
That would be combining the parcels at the end, after. Not specifically what we're talking about right now. Yes, the developer would like all full abatements on the whole project. Yes, that is correct.
Or else we get poor quality?
Well, I will tell you that I don't know that council generally operates on fear and threats from developers. I don't know that that's going to play a ton into our decision-making, at least not mine personally.
All right. I'll take a deep breath and let you guys do your thing.
Thank you, Carrie. Yes.
I guess I'll turn to the city manager for maybe clarification on that point. So when the developer mentions the desire to combine and have this all be one parcel, that is not on the table as an option for us tonight.
That would be an action completely separate from what council is doing this evening.
Just want to clarify that for everybody.
That is a private property owner decision that has, that is not the purview of the local government and definitely not what's before the council this evening.
Thank you for clarifying that.
And I think, just to be clear on that, that was a offer that, if it would make it more palatable to us, that is an offer they are extending, but it's for, the issue tonight is immaterial.
Right, correct. That was, I believe, to simplify the way that the project was being discussed in the various phases and parcels. It is one project, although we have different parcels that we're talking about today. It seemed that that was, as council member said, an offer after to simplify things moving forward, but it has no bearing on what we are talking about today, to be clear. Clear. Okay, thank you. All right. What is the desire of council? Again, we've been talking about this for quite some time. We have illuminated the options that we have for us. And we need to make one of these motions or approve one of these motions today.
Thank you. Mr. Hunter, to your point, I also don't appreciate the thinly veiled threats that I perceived to come across in the developer's response to our questions. You know, this development's going to be here after the developer's long gone, you know, probably after I'm gone. So no matter how the vote goes tonight, you know, the developer's going to do what you're going to do. And I hope that whatever you do is not only the best for Berkeley, but that it is the best for your legacy. Because as a developer, it's your legacy that's going to remain. We're all going to be gone. And so I just hope that with all that in mind, that you will do the best. That being said, I also am not a hundred percent willing to cut off my nose despite my face. We have a property in a prime location in our downtown that, this has been going on for, I think, probably five years. Prior to the remediation beginning, it was already crumbling, decaying, a source of blight-ish. I mean, it wasn't falling down, but I mean, it's headed in that direction. So I want to see something get done. I don't want this to languish anymore. I think that if the developer decided to not move forward with the project, then there it sits. And then what do we do to have that just sitting? They could choose to use it as a loss leader while, yes, still paying tax on the property itself. They could try and sell it to someone else. And then I think, you know, who's buying it? Because there's history. And anybody doing their due diligence in terms of development, I mean, if I was going to plunk down a bunch of money, I would certainly do my due diligence. So there's now history. This was not an easy decision. We've been, you know, grappling with this for a while now. My inclination is to do a partial, approve the school and the middle parcel, mainly because I'm trying to big-picture this and look at the abatement as deferred income and realizing the income that will happen in the long term, which will benefit the city the most. Thank you.
And just to be clear, that was option number four.
Yes.
Of the options that we spoke about, full approval, full denial, school parcel only slash other parcels. Okay, that was number four. Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. First of all, thank you Director Schluto and Director Pollak as well. You know, the memo was very helpful and I think does point to a need. I'm not convinced that there is a need for the other properties that are not the school. I do think there does seem to be a need for the school, but in the end, this will be a realized development. It's not a hypothetical one. And we can see how quickly many years go by when we talk about the idea of a development. So I think this is, while a very difficult decision, hopefully the time here to get it done. So I am supportive of the abatement just for the school, no other parcels. And all that being said, to Mr. Hunter's point and Councilmember Dean's, I do think the tone of the memo from the developer may have soured some folks, myself included. I would suggest that as the project does go forward, if it does, that the methods of communication with the city and residents alike be evaluated for prime optimization. So, thank you.
Thank you. So we've got option three and we've got an option four on the table so far. Anybody prefer option one or two? I mean, I think we can kind of just go around and give our thoughts, see where we are, and then ultimately we'll be able to make a decision. Councilmember Blanchard, I believe I saw your hand up.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is the third developer we've had working on this project. My concern is I want to see a good project here, one that will solve a problem with the existing building and give us some apartments and stuff that will last for a number of years. So based on that, my goal, my initial view was to go with full approval, but I could live with something less than that right now.
Okay. That is nice and ambiguous, full or something else. At this point, we are options one, three, or four. All right, that's fine. Thank you, Councilmember Blanchard. Councilmember Price, we might as well just move around here.
Yes. So I am not interested in full approval for many of the reasons that have already been stated. I'm also not interested in not approving at all. I think that the reason we approved the district, all those reasons stands. The reason for the school needing an abatement, I think, stands. I think that there is an argument to be made for that middle parcel being a support of Phase One, which has a clearly defined support of the school. And there is a case potentially to be made for including the school and that middle parcel as one project and approving both. But I would also be willing, because there are not the clear needs with that middle parcel, to only approve the school. So I, yeah, I can make the case for either. And I like to listen to other people's thoughts who feel strongly about including two parcels in the abatement or simply one. I'd like to have more discussion about the nuances of those.
Councilmember Baker, is it fair, based on your comments earlier, to say that you were for option three, which is the school?
That's correct, yes, option three. I continue to struggle with the need for the other two parcels. Last meeting, there was a discussion about, or the point was raised about water retention capacity, which would presumably go in that middle parcel. But I scratch my head because every other new development is going to need to have water retention as well. And so if we were to say, you know, hey, if you want to tear up a parking lot to do the water retention that you need to do as part of making a building here in the city, you know, here, have some money. I'm not comfortable with that. So I remain strongly in favor of option three to move forward with the, with the school building only.
And again, just to clarify, Councilmember Henin, option two, denial, was your preferred?
Full denial. As I had mentioned in my remarks, I almost got to yes on the school, but I just didn't quite get there. And I'll mention, I asked some questions about the stormwater retention and does it increase property values? And based on some communication, Ms. Schluto can correct me if I get this wrong, but based on some communications we got from the county, adding the water retention in that middle property will not increase its value. So I think there may be some money, one way or the other, that goes into that middle property, but I don't think it's going to be significant compared to the other two parcels.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question about that water retention system on page seven. I was, if Mr. Baumgarten or Ms. Schluto could tell me if what they plan to do for water retention goes above and beyond the requirements? Or is this plan simply meeting our city's current codes and requirements for water retention?
I would prefer to defer to Director Schluto on that.
Hello, all. So the stormwater detention is in accordance with Oakland County standards, and Oakland County encourages municipalities and developers to go above and beyond. So these go above and beyond what Oakland County has, but I couldn't guarantee you how much because I don't review the stormwater detention plans. Those are not part of my purview. I can get you that information tomorrow, but those are in the hands of HRC and DPW, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So in the interest of eliminating some of our options here, there was, I only heard one council member advocating for full denial at this point. So I don't know that that's going to get the four votes. Is everybody fair with that one at this point? Likewise, outside of Councilmember Blanchard, could go full, could go a different direction. That was the only support that I heard for full as well. So I think that one is also going to be eliminated. We are now down to two remaining options. The option is a partial on the school only or the partial for the two parcels, the school parcel and the parcel, oh, the middle parcel as well. So that's where we are at. And looking at my quick math, there's, depending on where Councilmember Blanchard ultimately wants to fall on this, as well as Councilmember Price.
I'll move to four.
You'll move to four. Okay. Let's, we've got these two options at this point. So let's just go around and tell me which option you prefer. And I think that's going to probably get us where we need to be. We'll start on this end this time because I think I started over there.
School only for me.
School only, okay.
So I don't want to be difficult, but my vote's a no.
You can, yeah, you can refrain. That's okay, from having to choose one of these. Mayor Protem?
Number four.
Councilmember Baker?
To quote Monty Python, "The number shall be three."
Okay. Councilmember Price?
School and the middle parcel.
Okay, that is. Councilmember Blanchard?
Option four.
Option four, which leads us in a three-to-three tie at this point. And that is assuming, again, I have not jumped into this conversation because I didn't want to steer anybody or attempt to steer anybody. My thoughts are similar to some comments that my colleagues have made. I can understand the abatement on the schools parcel. And I think that from a development perspective, if I were the developer and my goal was to keep that building because it does have some, not only historic and architectural aspects that the community, I think, deems important. It also does come with some additional costs to keep it that way, and I understand that. I am not a big fan of abatements in general for other aspects of the project, and despite what the developer has heard. So if I had to make a decision on it, I would certainly be, number three would be where I would, I would fall. So that's not going to get us where we need to go. So somebody's going to have to convince somebody else to change their mind, or we're going to stay here until it happens. Councilmember Baker?
So thank you, Your Honor. And I certainly don't mean to put my colleague on the spot, but you mentioned you were almost there with the school district. Would the applicant be able to say anything that would get you just over the finish line to nudge towards number three? Or is that, you think you're pretty kind of set?
I'm firm. I spent a lot of time.
And that's fine. I don't...
That's fine. I didn't mean to, just was curious.
And that's, that's perfectly, that's a perfectly reasonable question, so.
Thank you.
Well, because if we vote on number, on number three, and it ends, it would end three to four. And then we would be down with that one and we would be left with the other one, which then presumably would also not pass. And in that case, then nothing would be approved at that point because a full is also not going to get it and we would be left with only option two at that point. So we are either going to do a full denial or one of the parcels. Anybody have any thoughts?
I do have a thought. So I do know that because of COVID, materials costs have gone up, labor costs have gone up. I experienced it myself in my business. I don't know if that is a factor, but it's everywhere. Just throwing that out.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Your Honor, and I'd ask my, my colleague, if, if you plan to seek any abatements to help you offset the increased costs of COVID.
There are none available to me.
Okay, well, it's, I think, you know, if the developer was not aware of COVID and the fact that the prices for materials and, and labor is going to fluctuate, to say the least, then I think that's yet another notch towards them, you know, sharpening their pencils and thinking things out.
Fair enough.
Well, we are a little bit of an impasse. Go ahead.
So again, my reason for being interested in including that middle parcel is because I see the case of it being made as it's, it's all one project. The school and that section of the lot, which supports the school, is Phase One, clearly to me, one project. So I am very interested, for those of you who want to separate the school out from the parking lot, to, to explain more to me about why, because I'm not closed off to that as my reasoning for supporting only an abatement on the school.
Thank you, if I, if I may, just, just one quick thought.
Yes.
When the applicant was speaking a little bit ago, they reiterated the notion that it's entirety is one project, rather than like the two things. And so if we take them at that word, and it is a single project, then that means that just going with the school district would be fine, or just in the school district, with the school, because, you know, they see it as one project, and, and I believe the termina, the reason for phases and things was try to begin to expedite certain actions while we wait for others. So, you know, there, there, I happen to embrace their concept of it being one, one project, including the additional construction in the back, and, and therefore I think the, helping them with the environmental challenges of the existing facility continues to make sense to me.
That is an excellent point, and when I do challenge myself to simply take the applicant for their word of what they're saying in their answers, it makes it much harder for me to support the abatements, because of, like has been pointed out, the failed threats, because of many parts, but including the excerpt that Josh Hunter read, which is if the abatement is rejected on all three parcels, the project as currently designed will almost certainly not move forward as planned, reduce the overall cost of the building, but would also reduce the rental rates the developer could attract, shifting away from the young professional demographic and targeting a different segment of the rental market. Those, that language speaks strongly to me and my values and wanting to support development that is more accessible to our aging out seniors, and I'm not looking for more housing for young professionals. So going with, challenging me to accept the developer at their word for the information that they presented, I will switch my vote over to supporting the abatement of the school only and not the two other parcels.
With where we are right now, before we go any further, because I'm just going to start calling the question, and we're going to start voting, and if any of them get enough votes, then they're going to get enough votes, and if they don't, then they don't, and they fail for a lack of enough votes. So with that in mind, Ms. Mitchell, I'd like you to call the roll on R 3221, which I know there are four of them. The resolution to approve commercial rehabilitation exemption certificate application for 2219 Coolidge LLC located at 2219 Coolidge Highway for parcel 2518-431-032, which in your playbooks is option number three. So we're going to call that, and if we don't get enough votes, we will call the next one, and we will continue to do so until something either gets enough votes or simply doesn't, and that's it. Everybody, I'm bored with what we're doing here. I don't want anyone to get, be confused on council. Yes, okay, all right. Ms. Mitchell?
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
No.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
No.
Dean?
No.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Done.
That is four to three. The abatement on only the school parcel has been approved. The other abatements have not been approved. There are not going to be enough votes to get that anywhere else. All right, we now move on. What is the next item on our agenda, Ms. Mitchell?
That would be communications.
Who gets to go first?
Councilmember Henin.
Councilmember Henin.
Right. Nothing to report from my board's commissions. The tree board will next meet on Monday, November 8th, and the zoning board of appeals may also meet on the 8th. They tentatively have a case, but there's a chance that it might be pulled. And then I just wanted to give a quick update on COVID vaccination rates in Berkeley. The latest data I was able to get from the state is September 7th. They've been a little slow in getting to me, but we now have, 79% of our adults have received their first dose of vaccination. That's up 1% from the previous month, but better news, our children aged 12 to 17 have now, that have received their first dose is now 68%, and that's an increase of 5% in just a one-month time. Then just finally, I'm looking forward eagerly to the authorities making a decision, probably within the next month, on children for five to 11, which I think will go a considerable way towards helping us finally getting through this. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. There's been no meetings since our last council meeting of my committees, so just a reminder that the planning commission will meet October 26th at 7:00 PM here in council chambers, and the EAC will meet this Thursday, the 21st, at 6:30 on the second floor of public safety. And also a big welcome to both Tricia and Noel, who are new members of the EAC, so thank you very much for your willingness to serve, and that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem Dean?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just have two quick parks and recreation updates. The latest Berkeley Times newsletter is coming out, so look for new senior trips and activities over the coming months. And if a senior that you know or who is listening is interested in snow removal services this season, please call the Parks and Recreation office at 248-658-3470, and an application will be mailed to you. This is a service that the city provides using CDBG grant funds, but you do have to fill out an application if you want to be considered for the snow removal service. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor. A couple of quick updates. First, the DDA board did meet last week on the 13th, and as we've noticed and taken action on tonight, they recommended to us the, the DDA director, as well as three new members of the board, and so congratulations to them all, and thank them, thank you for your service. And thanks to all the participating businesses and residents and visitors to the city who have enjoyed the Berkeley events thus far in our community. There's been quite an impressive roster of activities for, for folks, both young and old, to enjoy all that the city has to offer, in particular our downtown. And that leaves us with the Penn Ultimate and the Ultimate event coming up on the 30th, which is the trick-or-treat stroll throughout our downtown on the 30th from 12 until 3:00, followed by the Monster Mash that same day overlapping from 2:00 to 6:00. And so as part of the DDA discussions last week, they were, they are taking notes on what's working and what's not working. Our, our director was very gracious in acknowledging that not everything can go perfectly, and there may be a few bumps and some lessons learned, and feedback from businesses and residents alike to make next years even better, and hopefully we'll be able to bring about additional programming along the way. And as always, downtownberkeley.com. The historical committee met last week, Tuesday, the 12th, and again, thanks to them for, for these signs, the first 150 folks that come to the, the special open house for the, for the museum. Will get one of those for free. And I just learned before the meeting that there may be an opportunity for some progress in accepting credit cards. I was going to lament how, well, I should still lament the fact that I went to the Lions game yesterday, and they've gone completely contactless, so you cannot pay by cash anymore. And sadly, our historical committee, the only way you can buy anything is with cash or a check, and they again have to turn away folks who would want to go home with a coffee mug or a book or something because we don't have that in place. So fingers crossed that, that that may soon come to a museum near you. The technology committee meets on Wednesday, the 20th, at 6:30. I'm not yet aware of any progress being made on the Alexa app. She's been a little tired, sitting on the shelf, must be taking a nice siesta there, waiting for some attention. But building on the technology piece, I'd like to quote a fellow named Tom Rosenstiel, who is, who said, "Misinformation is not like a plumbing problem you fix. It is a social condition like crime that you must constantly monitor and adjust to." Now, I mention that with the technology bend because this month, October, is Cybersecurity Awareness Month. In addition to the, you know, the usual cybersecurity tips that, that I've offered in the past, such as selecting a long, diverse password with letters and numbers and uppercase and lowercase and symbols and all that kind of good stuff, and changing your password regularly, backing up your data regularly, don't click on suspicious links and, and open suspicious attachments, all those kinds of good things that still are worth reminding ourselves of. I wanted to just talk about knowledge security as well. The social media is an incredibly powerful tool. I've seen it used for great forces of good, sharing information, and as mentioned, with the holiday lights parade, they put a plug in for their Facebook page, and I encourage everyone to go check that out and find ways to help volunteer and support them. When used responsibly, it's truly amazing, and yet we still find folks that, that simply like or share something without necessarily reading it or understanding the content that's been added into that. We as humans need to resolve things, and so if we don't see something, we, we fill in the blanks ourselves, and that can sometimes work, you know, that spark of creativity and ingenuity can be a good thing, and other times when, when we're filling in the blanks on some social media aspects and, and putting our own creative spin on things, it tends to lead to misinformation, which leads to confusion. We see that nationally, and we see that locally, and I'd just like to help remind us all that as we demonstrate proper cybersecurity and cyber hygiene, let's please continue to use knowledge and smart hygiene as well. Thank you.
Amen. Councilmember Price?
Yes, thank you. I have nothing new to report from my committees, but I would like to take the opportunity to use my communications this evening to talk a little bit about Jack Blanchard over Ever since I expressed an interest in serving on council way back in 2017, Jack made every effort to impart his knowledge about what this job really entails. Some might say scare me off, and make sure that I really genuinely wanted to serve. Jack has never gone easy on anyone, but the challenges he throws at you, whether a candidate or an applicant, they're always in the best interest of Berkeley and often ultimately in the best interest of yourself. Once I finally became an elected official, Jack requested a phone call to go over the basics before my first council meeting. I was expecting him to help me review the process of making a motion, or perhaps to advise me not to drink too much water before an especially long meeting, but instead, he gave me detailed instructions about what to do in the case of an active shooter coming into council chambers. And despite every effort, he still hasn't scared me off. In fact, I have always felt incredibly safe and confident in this role with Jack by my side. Jack, you are going to be sorely missed up here. Not only will we all need to pull out our magnifying glasses for vehicle specs and typos in the packet, but we will also miss your steady presence and pragmatical approach toward problem solving. Fortunately, we know that you are not going far. I am sure you are thrilled to step into your new role as the full-time volunteer emergency manager for the city. Berkeley is stronger and safer because of your service. Thank you so much for all that you do.
Thank you, thank you.
That's all, Your Honor.
Thank you, and Councilmember Blanchard is not just disappearing. He, he will be back for the next meeting, at least the beginning, so that we all have an opportunity to, to thank him for his service and the impact that he's had. So you're not getting it tonight, Jack. You got to wait about a month. We'll go over here now for your thoughts, though.
Instead of emergency management call tonight, I'm going to tell you a short story. And so I, I focused on emergency management. On August 4th, 2019, a 24-year-old went with his sister and best friend to the Oregon Entertainment District in Dayton, Ohio. After he went to a bar with his sister and friend, he left them, returned to his car. A few minutes later, he came back and opened fire near the entrance of Ned Pepper's bar. The Dayton police had a bar detail of six officers on duty that night just around the corner from where he opened fire. When they heard the fire, the gunfire, they ran to Ned Pepper's and engaged and killed the gunman within 33 seconds of his first shot. During those 33 seconds, he killed eight, injured 17, his sister was killed, his best friend was severely wounded, and a total of 27 people were taken to area hospitals. The shooter is dead. Is that the end of the story? Nope, it's just the beginning, because we're a municipality. In the next 24 hours beyond, the following must be accomplished. Communications, everybody wants to know the details. Emergency operations, emergency preparedness is the creation of organizational structures within government agencies that enable them to provide support, resources, and service needed during and after emergencies. Victims and families, following a mass shooting, victims and their family's members have short and long-term needs, must establish a family assistance center. Donations, you have to arrange for a funding mechanism to accept donations because there will be donations. Vigils, the community needs to grieve and will want to arrange a vigil. VIP visitors, elected officials, federal, state, and local elected officials may converge on the city. Mental health, the trauma is a major issue for both the injured, the families, and the first responders. These are what we must prepare for. And now, I do have a quote on emergency management, it's from Nan Whaley, the mayor of Dayton, and she said, "It's not if, but when a mass shooting happens in your community." That's why I focus on this stuff.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Jack. And again, you will have one final opportunity to speak from that seat at the next council meeting. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we've been advertising and discussing for, for almost two years now, our Mass Plan process is coming to the end of its run here. It's, it's hopefully going to be made official in the next two months. The, the next big opportunity to, to see it, weigh in on it, to have your say on it will be at the next planning commission meeting, I believe it's the 26th, at 7:00 PM. It's available online now. It was distributed today by email, so please take a chance to review it. It is hopefully where our city heads in the next five to 10 years. That's, that's why we spent so much time on garnering information and feedback, support from the community through the planning commission, through a steering committee, through public events, you name it, we had our ears open for it. And so we're excited to have this coming for the planning commission and ultimately before the city council to set a clear course of, for the future of our fantastic community. So excited about that, and stay tuned for, for more information on that as well. Next up, I'd like to congratulate the Berkeley Steelers. Not only did the flag team win the flag bowl this past weekend, but the freshman JV and varsity teams are all heading into the playoffs, so kudos to them. I had a chance to become a Steeler family this year. I've been completely impressed with the organization. They do a wonderful thing in the community, and it's, they're, do a wonderful job both on the cheer side and the football side. So kudos to them and the success they've already had and the success they're about to have in a long and deep run in the playoffs. Next up, the Coolidge Task, Coolidge Oversight Task Force Committee will be meeting in this room in a week on the 25th at 7:00 PM. So we look forward to, again, continuing to gather feedback from that committee, as well as anybody else who is interested in weighing in on items they would like to, that they think worked well, items that they would like to see change, or just to come in here, the committee go through what has happened up to this point, and then also make a plan for, for the next steps as well. So again, this room in one week. Last but not least, I'm wearing a pink tie today. October is Real Men Wear Pink Month. It's a month-long fundraiser for the American Cancer Society as they highlight the scourge that is breast cancer. Not only is it affecting many, many people across the globe, it has a personal touch this year. As you see, we were touting RB Strong, a member of our own Berkeley family, is currently fighting this fight, and it's reflected not only in some of our decals, but the pink outs on our social media icons, but also we have a cruiser that was wrapped for the Public Safety Department in, in pink decals as well. So it's, it's personal to our family like it is to many, many other families across the country and across the world. So those are my comments this evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mitchell?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Before our next city council meeting, we will be holding a local election on Tuesday, November 2nd. All
All seven precincts will be open from 7:00 AM until 8:00 PM. Um, residents will be asked to vote for one, uh, mayoral candidate serving a two-year term, and three council members, all serving four-year terms. Um, there is still time to vote absentee ballot, if that is what you prefer. Current registered voters can vote an absentee ballot up until 4:00 PM the day before the election. Um, there's also time to register to vote, if that, um, if you need to do so. And anyone interested in registering to vote should come to the city clerk's office with proof of residency. Um, I'd also like to remind residents, if you do have your absentee ballot at home and it's voted and completed and sitting on your table, please return it to the clerk's office. Um, it does help us to receive the absentee ballots, um, as early as possible. You do not need to hold on to your ballot, um, to drop it in a drop box on election day. Um, and for all election-related business, you can visit berklymish.org/vote. You can call us at 248-658-3310, or send an email to clerk@berklymish.net. Or you can come visit us in person. We will be open on Saturday, October 30th, from 8:30 AM until 4:30 PM.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, I just have a few things. First, I want to congratulate our very own Mayor Pro Tem Bridgette Dean. I was notified, uh, just a couple days ago that she is going to be one of the recipients of the Oakland County Domestic Violence Prevention Award this year. Um, she was nominated... Well, let me give you a little bit more. Hold on, let me give you a little bit more. Now, we can do that. She was nominated due to her dedication, um, to victims of domestic violence, and her efforts exemplify a standard of excellence, um, in compassion to which we all certainly aspire to. And without her efforts, many victims would continue to feel helpless and alone. She will be recognized on October 27th at noon in the Oakland County Commissioner's Auditorium for the 2021 Oakland County Domestic Violence Prevention Awards Ceremony. The ceremony also memorializes victims who have tragically lost their lives at the hands of their butchers. Okay, now, congratulate. Well deserved. Extremely well deserved. Um, I also have an update, uh, from Liz Petrie. The Berkeley Cares Food Pantry would like to thank residents and council members Blanchard, Dean, and Henan for making the first pack the pantry a robust success. With all the generous donations, uh, they were able to help so many people in need. The need is certainly great, um, and it's continuous. It is not going to just stop one day. So they're open Saturdays from 10:00 AM to noon, and by appointment. Uh, if you know a senior or veteran, a family in a local area that's in need, please contact them at 248-907-0723. Again, that's 248-907-0723. Or email them at theberklicaresfoodpantry, berklicaresfoodpantry@gmail.com. Just berklicaresfoodpantry@gmail.com. Um, and it's a thank you to Berkeley. Together, we are all making a difference, and that is from Casey, Jessica, and Liz over at the Berkeley Cares Food Pantry. There's a lot that's going to transpire between now and our next council meeting. Michigan and Michigan State are going to battle for supremacy on the gridiron. Our kids are going to get all hopped up on sugar, uh, for Halloween. And there's an election that we just heard about that, uh, that's going to occur to seat the 39th Council of the City of Berkeley. And some of those events will certainly cause consternation. Certainly in my house, if Michigan loses, it's going to be a very, very bad day. In my house, when my children are over served with candy and can't sleep or have stomach aches or throwing up or the like. But the election should not be one of those places that causes consternation. Because no matter who is sitting in these seats, Berkeley is going to continue to be Berkeley. We're a safe city that truly cares about everyone, work together. We heard that today through a number of, uh, different, um, agenda items. Provide exemplary services. We have wonderful community events and always aspires to be even better. So please remember that as you make your thoughtful decisions when casting votes, if you haven't already voted. And don't let differences of opinion change who we are as a community and who we are always going to be. And as, uh, my colleague mentioned, man, just stay away from social media. That's probably even the best way to do it. As we saw this weekend, things can spiral out of control because misinformation tends to travel all around the internet far, far more quickly than it would if you actually just spoke to somebody and actually, you know, had a conversation. So I understand there are merits. I do like to see pictures of my brother's kids who live in another state and all of those things. Uh, but if this weekend was any test case for how misinformation can shape people's, and scare, and perceptions, we got a number of emails about things, and we were able to say, "Well, look, that's, this is the actual case," and we talked about all those things today. That is always going to be my plea, has been my plea for, I don't know, probably the last four years. But every time an election comes up, it turns, it tends to get a little, a little uglier on social media. And remember, we are Berkeley. We're going to continue to be Berkeley, and that is ultimately what matters. With that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Support.
Motion to adjourn by Mayor Pro Tem Dean, the support from Councilmember Henan. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. The October 18th, 2021, and final full meeting of the 38th Council of the City of Berkeley is adjourned.